We're gonna go ahead and call the city council meeting of August 19th to order. Please stand for the invocation. Ms. Ellis.
Let us pray. Great Scott, we thank you and we appreciate the opportunity to serve you once again. Lord, we ask that you bless the city of Jeffersonville, bless the people that work for the city of Jeffersonville, the first responders, all of those that you've sent to serve your people. And Lord, as we go about the business of this city, we ask that you be with each and every one of us individually and corporately. And bless us and keep us and guide us in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilperson White, Councilperson Harris, Councilperson Maples, Councilperson Gill, here, Councilperson Hawkins, here, Council President Stotney, present, Councilperson Owen, here, Councilperson Ellis, here, Councilperson Samuel, here. Let the record be slapped, all nine members are present.
We have minutes to approve from August 5th. Motion to approve. The motion is second to approve, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signature five by saying aye. All those opposed? Approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion second to approve, the agenda is submitted, any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signature five by saying aye. All those opposed? Claims to be approved.
I just have one thing unless you're gonna, will we remove that on page seven?
I don't, I'm not aware, I'm sorry.
On page seven, under safety, when you look down, the section in the last at 725 that's on the Chase credit card, it's already asked for the reimbursement. That is for, that, remember when I brought up last meeting about the class, the airfare was on last meeting, and this was for the class that was scheduled for the end of this month for Amir.
So this has been charged to the credit card?
This was charged to the credit card, but reimbursement, but it is on our docket and we need to remove it.
Yes. It, well, the charge needs to be approved and then we'll also approve a credit for it when it comes through on the next credit card statement.
So we let it stand?
Right.
Okay.
Knowing that there's a credit coming on the next.
Okay, I'll see when the credit, 'cause I go through credit cards anyhow. Well, thank you, I thought we had to remove it.
I think.
Yeah, or something.
Yeah, to make the credit card statement balance.
And it, the reason it's the two million, we did our, isn't this our final transfer now for the year of the two million?
No, we'll have another.
One million?
Two million and then a 900,000, I believe.
Yeah, the two million we transferred into healthcare from under council. Everything else in order?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to approve the 2,662,354.21.
Second.
Your motion second to approve the civil claims, any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signature five by saying aye. All those opposed? Parks claims.
Parks are 115,758.93.
All claims in order?
Yes.
Then I'll make the, no, I have some questions, I'll make a motion to approve the 115,758.93.
Second.
Your motion second to pass the parks claims, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signature five by saying aye. All those opposed?
Thank you.
Report to the clerk.
Yes, just for housekeeping purposes, the September council meeting will be Tuesday, September 3rd, and I don't know if you all need to.
I think we'll need a, we'll still have to have a try, I reckon.
Got that squared away?
Do it now.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, first up is ordinance 2019 OR 36, Nathan Samuel, can you talk about that?
Uh, this is about the homeless needs and services money, and after our last meeting, I modified it from the percent that folks were concerned about to the dollar amount, and nothing else was changed, I'd sent emails out about it, and I want to get any questions. I'll make a motion to approve it and we'll discuss it if there's questions.
Is that second reading or second, third?
Second and third.
Okay. You second?
Yeah, I'll say.
So we have a motion second to pass on second and third reading, discussion?
The only question I had was if maybe we wanted to at least slow down, given the recent news of the change at the Haven House. I don't know if that makes a difference in what we do moving forward as far as funding or if it opens a door to change course of how we help address the homeless situation. It may not change anything at all, but that was a major development in the last two weeks that I think warrants some discussion, maybe not in a council meeting right away, but at least some discussion before we make a big decision on how we're gonna go about funding some of these initiatives.
That's one of the reasons that I second that this was the cause of the situation that's occurring at the Haven House, and I still have some questions about that facility and what's gonna go on. You know, I've been in contact with people from the neighborhood and as it stands right now, they still do not want this facility in the neighborhood, and that's one of my big concerns is what's gonna happen with it, is it gonna continue to be there, who's gonna provide the services, and how is it gonna be operated?
I would just answer that this ordinance was not geared to Haven House, they could've applied for some funding, but it was, it's just to address, you know, the issue's much larger than that, and just to earmark dollars, so next year, potentially if we chose to move any later this year, we could to start to seed the fund, if there's an issue still yet this year, we have the opportunity to use this to address it quickly, but, and frankly, to have service providers think through their plans for how am I gonna address working with a particular issue, and, you know, think it through enough to put it on paper and make a proposal, so.
So how many do you, how many of these entities, I don't expect you to know the answer, how many of these entities out there that you think would be proposing, and there could be some that don't even exist yet, but like, how many are out there?
Well, I know we got Haven House, and Exit Zero, it could possibly come, we just had Pastor Moon came for the Homeless Prevention Coalition, just to name three that I know of.
Frankly, it's, it's, any church that is, that is either doing this already or has an idea to, of a need that they see, they would qualify, then they'd be chosen, but they could qualify, they could be eligible to submit for funding.
Yeah, because the.
I would suggest that that would be problematic to give money to religious organizations considering separation of church and state, making yourself up for criticism if you have a clear church-based organization, say Augustine's gonna ask for money for a project, I would think that they, that's one reason why the more lengthy version of the law takes into consideration certain definitions, eligible organization, no organization that is involved in politics, no organization, and that's why I think it's dependent in nature of business to make sure it's constitutionally solid, and as we've all talked about, the constitutionality of something is only an issue when, whether Dustin, the lawyer challenges it, correct? Until then, it's the law, right? However, I would have suggested that you expose yourself to potential criticism under constitutional challenge of separation of church.
Well, I'm gonna do it the right way, but I suppose I need to support, I'm supporting this 'cause I feel we need to do something. I can only look, I only work with different entities here in the city of Jeff, and I get a lot of calls for the homeless camps and trying to get something done, 'cause the police are called, they don't, no place to move them, it's getting worse, it's escalating, and, I mean, we're, if they don't pass this, I will say, if you don't do something soon, you're gonna, we've already got businesses, I know my businesses are complaining to me, I just got a call, actually now higher up in McDonald's, they've contacted me, so it's like, we're at the point where we need to have some serious conversations if you don't like this, 'cause it's really coming to a head in my opinion, and it's just getting worse and not better.
Larry, do you still maintain that this is not a legal ordinance after next year?
I believe that the word change that is, will be considered.
Versus shall.
I don't think shall, but this will be, I think that that change satisfied that mandated budgeting, you know, I'm always more comfortable with the word may.
Isn't that more appropriate?
I would suggest I'm more appropriate with the word may.
Will and shall are pretty similar.
And yes, and I think that may is a lot more clear.
But even if it did say shall, it wouldn't be enforceable on the state.
If it did say shall, it would be enforceable, you're bound to have. Well, I don't think that $50,000 is even a Band-Aid on the homeless situation, we have it all over the city, I mean, every part of the city that you go to, well, I won't say every part, but I'll say a majority of the city that you go to, there's a homeless camp, anywhere there's vacant property and some trees or bushes that will shelter them, you're gonna find a homeless camp. The Clayburg area has been dealing with it for a long time, and I'm not just talking about Haven House, but I'm talking about the areas there, on Stanford Avenue by the railroad tracks, the area on Eastern Boulevard, just over the railroad tracks, that we turned the application down, if you go out on Hamburg Pike itself, right there, by Dutch Lane, the area there, there's a homeless camp back in there, so we're gonna find them everywhere, and I think, I don't even know if $50,000 would go very far with even coming up with a solution as to what we can do or how do we address this, so.
Well, and as you know, the Ogle Foundation is in the Carnegie Library Board, and I sit on that board, and every time we have a meeting, they bring up their column and saying, something has to be done with what's going on in our water park and what's going on around the businesses there, when you've got, it's gonna be a public health issue because of Jeff, they're on, it's in our gazebo's in our parks, it's by their doors, my good friend owns a flower shop in Youngstown, she can't get in her front door, which is right visible, right by all the services, or her back door, when she showed me, I was just, I was, I couldn't believe it, it was that bad.
And at my church, matter of fact, I just went to church last Friday, and as I went to go into church, you got homeless people that's living right there under the shelter, as you go in our church, we had to put a lock on the access under our ramp because they were climbing under our ramp, and just like you say, they're using the bathroom wherever is convenient for them, so we, we've got that problem all over the city, what do we do?
And then, on the opposite end of that coin, case in point, look at that heat out there today. Our weather changes so much and the storms and all that, and I feel for anybody that has to be out there in that streets in these conditions, and I, I mean, there's just, this...
I would, I would be willing to, or I would rescind my, my motion and modify this to change will to may, if the Ron would, would rescind his.
Rescind my.
And then.
I think, I think you have to make a motion to amend from what we approved previously anyway, as we approved on the first reading the other language entirely, so I think we'd need a motion to amend 190R 36 to the new language for the $50,000 with the change from will to may, under one letter A, and I'd make the motion to change or to amend.
I'll second there, and then also, just where it says economic development dollars, can we say economic development income tax dollars?
Oh, under whereas?
Yes.
Add income tax.
It says it lower.
Does it?
It says it under, I can do what you did, Lisa, later down on the page.
Okay.
Under one, under one A.
So the original motion, then the draw, withdrawn and the second, then withdrawn and replaced with Mr. Owen's motion.
And I second.
To amend with the word may, so are there any other changes? That was it?
Well, it would change, a lot of the language has changed from what was previously approved.
From what we have sitting in front of us, right, added the may, right, and struck out will. All right, so we're just gonna vote on that, the amended version here, so all those in favor, signature five by saying aye. All opposed? All right, so we're looking, we're working with the amended version now, and all ears for a motion?
I would like to say, I appreciate all of the words that have been said by different council persons with respect to the problem citywide, I would echo the comment that's made earlier that we should probably give some pause to pushing this as there is a likely change in the ownership of the Haven House, which could have a drastic effect on what we are experiencing throughout the city in a positive way. As we saw when Pastor New came here with the Homeless Prevention Task Force, and I believe we gave, I'm not gonna say 'cause I don't remember, 20 or 30,000, but what they did was not short of remarkable because they placed 100 people in 30 days in the house. So it's not that we haven't done anything, but no one's come to ask us to do something, and so just appropriating money, some appropriating doesn't stop what is happening throughout the city. I think we should focus these dollars, and we may have the opportunity to do that, at least I know we will have the opportunity to consider that once the change of the may at the Haven House. With a number of community partners involved with that, I think tremendous change can happen in a reasonable period of time.
It's, well, that change, 'cause apparently you must've had a more recent conversation, 'cause right now, they can only help the ones that come to Haven House, are they gonna be looking at doing some sort of outreach, like, are they gonna include all of that citywide then, or, I thought they could only?
Here now shelter doesn't just take people from Jeffersonville, it takes you to Mole.
I understand that, I guess I might ask the right question.
Well, the question you're asking, I'm not at liberty to get into the inner workings on that, that's better than just to pass it then. But there's potential there, and if we are able to, and interested in assisting that effort with $50,000, then that's probably a more beneficial conversation with respect to the problem that we're having.
I don't think anybody would disagree that we could do more as a city for a homeless population, I agree with Mr. Ellis, I think $50,000 is a drop in the bucket, but I just think, I wish we, I wish we were gonna do something more intentional than just saying, we're gonna appropriate $50,000 and feel good about ourselves. If, if there's something intentional that we can help support, an initiative that's gonna go out and place 100 people in 30 days, then I'll vote for that all day long, but to say we're gonna appropriate this money, we'll see who comes and asks for it, I just don't feel good about it. I appreciate the change from the percentage, and that's, you know, I don't, I don't mind voting on this maybe for a second reading even, but if there's a way we can make something more, if we can, if we make it more intentional, and know where we're gonna be putting these dollars, I feel like it would mean, it would mean more and it would have more of a purpose than just saying, well, let's, let's add $50,000 to the budget and see who comes to ask for it.
Just in response, the, I don't think anybody has the answer, I mean, if we did, we would already have done it and it'd be implemented and, and we wouldn't be having the issues. The, part of the thought behind this was, one, government needs to at least show a positive step to saying this is an issue and we're willing to put some skin in the game as part of it, second is, because we don't have the answer, if providers or folks that are working with this population hears that, oh, there's some money earmarked for that, now maybe I can move forward with my proposal or my exempt or my plan that I have that I didn't have the money for, then this, this allows for, I would say, maybe out of the box creation of ideas, rather than we say, well, we wanna fund what's already existing, because my hope is it won't. And the other, just my last comment is, you know, this has been in front of us for at least a month, and I've really gotten very little feedback at all, and that's why I said second and third, because if we, if we delay at another meeting, I don't anticipate getting any response in the meantime to change it, so this is, you know, this is kind of an attempt of leaving it somewhat broad to have those out of the box ideas to come forward, that was just the thought behind it.
But Nathan, wasn't your thought process, wasn't it the catalyst for this ordinance, what happened with the explosion in Oak Park and what happened with America's Best Hotel, those two situations that happened here in the city that caused for immediate need, which they came and we gave money, I don't think, of course, it was that coalition that also helped the ones that were displaced in Oak Park, was that kinda like the catalyst? 'Cause that's where I thought this was, to get to.
Let me say something, 'cause, you know, to me, it seems like every year, there's something.
Yeah.
Every year's there something, and this is, it's not really binding, I mean, it's not a binding, we can't bind future councils, I mean, it's not perfect, it doesn't outline exactly what organizations or what project, and 50K, 50,000's definitely not enough, but I do support the fact that it's a first step, and I, future councils can change it, modify it, increase the amount if there's a need, 'cause there's a certain situation, or maybe not funded at all because there's a solution that's developed, and I hope that's the case, but I plan on supporting it for those reasons.
I will add to that, that when we set up, if it would pass, we, we had to set up the fund, and when we set up the fund, that's where you can drill down and list specific parameters of how it can be spent or where it can be spent, it didn't have to be in this ordinance, it's when the controller, if we try to spend money that the fund says, no, it's a non-reverting fund for this purpose, we can't spend that money, so that's where you can drill down and tighten up whatever we want it to say, that's why, again, that's why this is a little bit.
Or they can simply not appropriate the cash to go into that fund.
True.
I think it just offers us an avenue to fix this problem, I think we all know that there's a problem, we don't know exactly how to fix it, but this just gives us an opportunity to address it, when it, you know, when people come up with needs, we can address them one by one.
We already do that.
Yeah.
We've done that twice this year.
Kenny, I know I commend Mr. Samuel for doing this, I, I just have a, I guess, a philosophical difference and thought of earmarking money within 10 of people, 'cause, you know, in the line of field I'm in, there are opportunistic people that will present something to you and you gotta make your decision based on what they told you in that moment, especially when they just show up sometimes and sign up, so I feel like it leaves avenues for that, and I will say, I was, I used to be on the, I believe I was on the board when the Homeless Coalition first started before Ms. Stinkle was on there, and I, money probably is involved, during those times, the things we were really working on were the white flag days, and I can tell you, the one thing that we never talked about was money, 'cause it wasn't an issue, it was participation, because churches will give you money, but you're not doing it here. Where do you, where, who oddly funds the Haven House? Money was never discussed in any of those meetings, not once. Now, maybe the goals have changed to the Homeless Coalition since I've been off the board, but never once did we talk about money, we talked about participation with community, local leaders, and the people involved, so I would vote no, though I commend Nathan for doing this, that's just my difference in thought process on this.
Well, one thing that I think has really brought, brought this homelessness to our attention, especially with me, in the past four to five months, we've been through a number of meetings, were both neighborhood meetings and meetings here at the council and the plan commission about an organization wanting to put something that would address some homelessness along with some substance abuse problems, and I feel like that I've been beat to death because of supporting the people, initially supporting the people that wanted to put the organization here, put the facility here, and then later supporting the people in the neighborhoods, and my support will definitely go to the people in the neighborhoods because I think that the people living in neighborhoods should have some say as to what's going on in their neighborhoods, and I will be supporting basically this ordinance that Nathan has put forth, but I also look forward to an opportunity to have some say when people, organizations come asking for some money for whatever they wanna do, because I do want my voice to be heard, and I want the people in the neighborhoods to know that I'm supporting what they want for their neighborhood.
How, not to cut off, I'll make a motion to approve the modified, amended version of 2019 OR 36 on the second and third reading.
I'll second.
Motion second, pass 2019 OR 36 on second and third reading, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a roll call.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Councilperson White.
No.
Councilperson Harris.
Yes.
Councilperson Maples.
No.
Councilperson Gill.
Yes.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Yes.
Councilperson Nolan.
No.
Councilperson Samuel.
Yes.
Councilperson Ellis.
Yes.
Council President Stotney.
Yes.
I wanted to explain that, as I was coming, the Homeless Prevention Task Force came in to help us to do America's best, I think, I am in support of people's dollars to help the new ownership of the Haven House and whatever program they could establish with community partners to solve the issues that the residents are experiencing and the homeless people are experiencing, so they can get back under feet, become self-sufficient, live in a place that is decent and, or temporary, a place that is decent and equitable, and I want this to be interpreted any way that, because it's not a good, well, support, taking care of the homeless issues that we have here, supporting those for a little bit, but I think that, I'm not sure what this ordinance does, but putting money out there for somebody to then, they can do whatever is future only appropriate when, when there's an anticipation that the community college can have a needed set in the next building area.
All right, thank you, moving on. 2019 OR 40, under number 10, Ms. Metcalf, it passed on first and second reading.
Yes, there's no changes.
Motion approved, 2019 OR 40, a third and final.
Second.
No motion, second to pass 2019 OR 40 on third and final reading, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signature five by saying aye. All opposed? All passes. Next up, Ms. Metcalf again, public hearing for 2019 OR 41, additional appropriation, passed in first and second reading.
There's no changes to this meeting.
All right, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against 2019 OR 41 and additional appropriation? Seeing none, we're gonna close public hearing, any discussion or motions?
No, just three.
Second. The motion is second to approve 2019 OR 41, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signature five by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Okay, thank you.
It passes, moving on, number, item number 12, Mr. Crouch, into new business.
Good evening, I'm here really on behalf of David Lincoln Baker as the county surveyor, he came to us proposing a joint agreement, this is an interlocal agreement with... He came to us proposing a joint agreement, this is an interlocal agreement between about eight different entities, eight or nine, it's listed on the second page of the agreement that I believe everyone has a copy of. Basically, this just provides updated aerial services for all the mapping that we use. I've already talked with the drainage, both the drainage board and the wastewater board, they're willing to split the cost of the $8,087 and seven cent share that is being requested from the city of Jeffersonville. All the other communities and entities have already approved and signed off on the agreement.
So, it's in the budget, I mean, in their budgets?
It is.
I must imagine they approved an interlocal agreement.
Is this for the GIS system?
Yes.
That the county charges the public to use?
Correct. Twenty-five thousand dollars of the total cost is coming from their subscription dues.
And we've funded this before without that subscription fee?
This is, this is a much less expensive bill for us than we've made in the past. I appreciate David putting this together for us with all the other communities.
I think the original was done in like 2013.
Yeah.
Original, interlocal.
And that's, what, forty thousand, maybe even more?
If not more.
As members of the council, do we have access to this system?
Absolutely. This is updating the county's GIS records, which me and my staff and wastewater staff, planning zoning staff, redevelopment staff, we all use it.
By monthly subscription.
Not by monthly prescription, subscription. City of Jeffersonville does not pay a monthly subscription to that.
I pay a monthly subscription for that personally.
Okay.
I mean, everybody else that isn't, doesn't work, the city of Jeffersonville does.
Changed two years, year and a half ago.
What?
Changed about a year and a half ago, they were requiring payment for civilians, citizens to have access to the service.
So, tax dollars go to pay for it, and then you've got to pay for it on top of that.
Yeah.
Well, but you do get, right, if you don't subscribe, you get access to it, just not all the information.
Just not all the information.
Is that the way it works?
You get the map, the same thing you get on Google Earth.
How much is it?
Uh, I think it's like twelve bucks a month.
Do you?
Matt's property owner and the picture.
I, yeah.
What action do we take on this? Because it's not an ordinance, it's not a resolution, we don't want this.
So, what I'm suggesting we do is vote on the, I just wonder, in the big room, if it's called that vote, it's a positive vote, executed by the president.
You have a key.
I jumped back sixteen years.
Yeah, you did a job on that one, sir. I have the original here.
So, the motion is to adopt or to accept, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
I think he said accept, didn't you there?
Accept.
All right, so we have a motion, second, to accept the interlocal agreement. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five or saying aye. All those opposed?
I'm not trusting anyone with this.
Then make a motion to authorize our council president to sign, is that right, Larry?
Well, so, I'm going to tell you that here, the way they drafted this is that you just make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign.
The president has to sign too.
Copy, I have to have just here the mayor and the city's, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to authorize the president of council and the mayor to sign.
Second.
A motion, second, to allow me to sign. All those in favor, signal five or saying aye. Opposed? Glad it passed, because I already signed it. Jumped a little bit. All right. Moving on, Mr. Owen, number thirteen, Southern Indiana Homeless Coalition update.
On the subject of homelessness, the Homeless Coalition reached out and asked to give a, present an update, so we have Keely Stingle with us for the final time, in this capacity anyway, and I'll just turn it over to her. She did have a handout that I think everybody received.
Good evening, everyone, thank you all for your time. Wanting to provide you with an update, we are also requesting renewal in funding, you all have supported us the past several years at seventy-five thousand dollars annually, and have continued to provide support to us, so we are requesting additional, requesting to renew that funding as well. So, it is very timely to talk about homelessness and how the community is addressing this issue. So, I'd like to share a couple of things with you, specifically because the Haven House was brought up, I want to go ahead and talk about that and where the coalition is with that situation, where our board is as well. So, you know, when we were notified about the sale of the property, that was something that really struck us. One of the things that we've been trying to do over the last several years is develop a system that works well for those that are either homeless or at risk. One of the biggest challenges in this region is being able to utilize the best practice. So, the state of Indiana tells us, Indiana Housing Community Development Authority tells us, the best practice for a region to get people connected to services who are at risk or homeless is to use your general population shelter as that front door, and unfortunately, that has not happened within our community. So, for us, seeing the sale of the property, there are a few things that we are looking forward to. So, one, that general population shelter is critical, it covers fourteen counties, the Homeless Coalition currently covers eight counties, and the amount of need, and as you talk about, the Haven House is at or over capacity all of the time, and the winter, that's even more so, that's why, as Scotty mentioned, we have the white flag shelter available in the region. And for us, there are a few things that have been holding our region back. That shelter has not been participating in the state-run software called HMIS, and that's the homeless management information system. So, when you hear numbers of how many people has the Haven House served, the state of Indiana has no record of that unless they participate in the point-in-time count, which thankfully Haven House has been participating in, but there is no record of who comes in there on a daily basis that the state of Indiana gets to look at. So, when you, Mr. Ellis, when you referenced, when you referenced the project Mariposa Springs, when our service providers go to compete for funding at the state level, they're not able to use the data and actually document the need that's here because there are providers not participating in HMIS. And part of that is because they don't receive federal funding, so there is no accountability for those types of providers to participate in the system. That's something that the Homeless Coalition is working on. So, that is an area of opportunity that we see. We also see an opportunity for the continuation of participation in the point-in-time count, that is the annual count of those experiencing homelessness. So, for example, in January of this year, the Homeless Coalition became the regional chair, so we are now the direct line of communication for our service providers to the state housing authority, and in doing so, we are responsible for organizing the point-in-time count. So, we were able to organize and coordinate with service providers, police departments, working with community volunteers, and what we were able to do is, I'll give you a reference, in 2018, one hundred seventy-eight individuals were surveyed in our eight-county region. This year, two hundred eighty-three were counted. Now, it's not because overnight there are a hundred more people homeless, it's because we have better coordination and working with our service providers who are needed to solve this issue. So, we understand that the Haven House has a lot of people that are in there, and a hundred thirteen surveys came from the Haven House last year. So, their participation in the point-in-time count is absolutely critical to us being able to access additional funding. But not only that, participating year-round in the homeless management information system is also something that should be expected of whoever operates that shelter next. So, some of the other things that we're not being provided that we really see an opportunity for are case management, also a minimum standard of how operations should be done, as well as coordinating with other members of the Homeless Coalition, so that we are all working together, so that we don't all have to do every single thing to solve homelessness, each person has a part to play, and the Homeless Coalition recognizes that everyone within the system has a part to play. And that means that if you're not an expert in case management, you don't have to provide it, let's find a partner for you that does provide case management. For example, one of the partnerships that we have with the city of Jeffersonville is when there is a homeless encampment and there is about to be a police sweep, we are contacted by the Jeffersonville PD. We then contact an outreach team, which is one of our members, whether that be Life Spring, who is represented here today and also on our board of directors, as well as Novi Ministries, and either one of those groups will go out and connect those individuals to services. So, that's something that we're able to do, so while we don't have that in-house, we rely upon the individuals who do offer that service and have that expertise. So, that's something I want to go ahead and discuss or address was the Haven House and the sale of that particular property. But I'd like to move on with some of the other, some of the other accomplishments that we've had over the last year, and so one of the questions that Councilman Owen brought up last time was, you know, I'm really concerned that so much of your budget is municipal funding, and you really need to look at how do you diversify your funding, and we've done that, not to the level that we'd like to do, we still have a lot of work to do, but we have gained additional sources of revenue. So, we've increased the amount of individual donations, also have increased the grant funding. So, we've been funded by the Community Foundation of Southern Indiana for a multi-year grant to focus on streamlining the entry into services. So, that is so that somebody gets into the services they need when they need it, and in a quick time, quickly, in a quick manner as well. So, that's something that we are able, have been able to do. We have also created membership investment, so there is a cost associated to joining the Homeless Coalition, and that allows individuals to buy into the mission, so there are, there is skin in the game from our service providers, knowing that this is something that they want to focus on. Also, I wanted to talk about white flag a little bit more in detail, so that operation started in December of 2016. Since inception, we have had nearly fifteen hundred visits to the shelter over three years, and as Scotty mentioned, white flag is something that traditionally, we don't come in and say, we need funding for white flag, because we have so much community buy-in for the white flag operation, that we have volunteers that staff the shelter. Now, this season, we did hire paid support staff to be there onsite, we had grown so much the season before that there, it was, could be potentially unsafe or put our volunteers in situations where they had to decide if somebody could stay in the shelter, if they were violating the rules, or they had to leave, and we felt like if you're there to give your time and you're there to serve, you shouldn't really have to be making that decision, so we made the judgment call to hire paid support staff. But our shifts are ran by volunteers, so that is something that we still, still do. We have had, each year, we've had nearly two hundred volunteers that volunteer for that operation, at least over the last two years, and we have a hundred seventy-one individuals who have come to the shelter, out of those fifteen hundred visits, that represents a hundred fifty-one individuals. But what's really impressive is the amount of hours that have been donated, and there are nearly four thousand hours that have been donated by the community for this effort. So, yeah, when you talk, it's not always a money issue, but certainly with our organization, we have to exist, and we have to make sure that we can operate to be able to leverage and access those community volunteers and our relationships in order to do a program like that. So, that's something that we've been able to do, and it's really our flagship program that we do. The next thing I want to talk about is that point-in-time count, so I referenced that the Homeless Coalition is now the regional chair, so that gives the organization great opportunity to communicate with IHCDNA about funding resources and help to share that information with our providers, as well as make sure that they are meeting the state and federal guidelines that they need to be meeting. So, when we did the point-in-time count, that number was two hundred eighty-three, and as you all have discussed earlier tonight, that doesn't really scratch the surface of what we're really experiencing. So, that number, if you speak to a private developer, especially when out of Indianapolis, they say they multiply that number by five to get the total need, but the state housing authority says to multiply that number by ten, so we're looking at nearly three thousand people experiencing homelessness in this eight-county region, and Clark and Floyd Counties historically have had over eighty percent of that population, due to the economic opportunity as well as the availability of service providers. So, that puts it into perspective, where are we getting at with the number? When we spoke into the Haven House in the past, they said last year, they've served seventeen hundred unduplicated individuals, so we're certainly closer to the number by participating in the point-in-time count. I also mentioned that we had secured multi-year funding from the Community Foundation of Southern Indiana, and why that is important is because when we talk about solving homelessness, if you're only looking at one piece of homelessness, solving that immediate need or immediate crisis, handing out a blanket, helping the, helping individuals survive that night, that is one part of the equation. We really have to look at a long-term holistic solution where we can look at this loop and see the cycle of what homelessness looks like, but also what service providers need to be engaged at what point in the wheel so that we can get sustainable change in the community. So, for us, the reason why this project is so important is it streamlines the entry into services, and why we felt like that was necessary is because we could not rely upon the general population shelter to service that front door. So, what we have done so far, we received the funding in May of last year, we have brought on a full-time staff person who's here also in the audience, she is with us full-time, she has a background in IT as well as nonprofit, so she has a great, a really great skillset to blend technology with the needs of nonprofits. So, for us in this project, our goal is to reduce the time that somebody experiences homelessness, so that if a law enforcement officer was out on the street, they would be able to have right on their mobile device what type of resources somebody would need. So, what we did first was pilot a community-facing platform called Louie Connect, you can get on it on your cellphones, it's louicconnect.com. It is a project funded by Metro United Way as well as Family Scholar House. That is a mobily optimized website where you type in what your demographic information is, then you type in what services you're looking for, and it pulls up a map that tells you what services are near you based on your location, and allows you to get directions and call immediately from that device. Why that's helpful is because right now, we have people jumping from service provider to service provider to service provider to service provider to find out, one, they didn't qualify for the services, and then they've wasted time and arranged childcare and missed out on job opportunities. So, it's critical that we have a front door to resources. So, we successfully piloted that platform, we had seventeen service providers participate, some of those are Life Spring, Center for Women and Families, St. Elizabeth's, Recenter Ministries, and many other service providers that we have attending Homeless Coalition members or Homeless Coalition membership meetings on a regular basis. So, the reason why that's so important is because that's a community-facing platform, but if we don't address the disconnect among the service providers, we're going to continue to have an issue. So, the second phase of this project is to do a service provider communication tool, where if somebody from Volunteers of America sends a client or makes a referral to Life Spring, Life Spring is able to see that right in their inbox that they're getting that referral, and that we know that that referral is made good, and Volunteers of America can say in confidence that that person now has that. So, what program or what platform are we using for that? We're using the Homeless Management Information System software, that's the statewide software that I, that I referenced earlier, that the Indiana Housing Community Development Authority runs and funds. They have allowed us to utilize that platform at no charge, have provided customizations so that our service providers can get in a simplified version of the software and be able to make a referral in that is, without having to get deep into the software without the training. So, that right now, we've, our customizations are completed, Jess, our project manager for the project, has completed the demo with the vendor at-work solutions, and so next, we're waiting on training, so we'll be doing training next month, and that will allow service providers, we'll do a pilot of service providers to test to see how that works, and like I said, one of the things that the state housing authority initially said was, okay, when you're making a referral, we'll have you print off a form and hand it to that individual, and then they can go to the next person or where they're supposed to be referred to. And we said, no, what we need in this region is our service providers to be held accountable so that our system works for the people who need it. So, we are doing it more behind the scenes where the onus is now on service providers to act on their referrals. So, that is something that we have done as well, and we have an incredible amount of buy-in, a lot of members of those homeless prevention task force are involved with the coalition, so they are represented in meetings that we have and continue to have the same goal that we do in terms of addressing this long-term. One of the things that I think is most important and what is an opportunity moving forward in this community is building capacity. So, as you referenced, America's Best, the Indiana Housing Development, Community and Development Authority recognized, our region has not been prepared to secure federal funding. So, when we talk about, we're not getting state resources, we're not getting state resources, they don't pay attention to anyone south of seventy, I agree with that, at the same time, when you look at the number of applications that our region is submitting to the housing authority, we're not getting funded because we're not applying, and we're not applying because our service providers need to build capacity to get there. So, really, as an opportunity moving forward, we see that there is a great need for that. The Indiana Housing Community Development Authority is willing to provide funding to hire consultants, so we are in the process right now of kind of waiting to see what they want to do moving forward, but we do anticipate additional state funds to help us with that. With that, I'll open it up, what questions do you have for me?
I've got a couple.
Yeah.
You mentioned that if there's a sweep by JPD, when was that set up? Because last we talked, I called you and said that needed to be set up, and I was unaware that it was set up. When was that, when was that done?
After you notified me, Scott and I have met.
Okay, and do our police officers have that app? Are they aware of that app? Because I just talked to a police officer named three days ago, and they're like, what are we supposed to do? They still, there's some kind of breakdown somewhere.
Well, Well, there's not necessarily a breakdown, as in we piloted at White Flag. So we piloted it with our White Flag population to see how effective it would be. At this point in time, what's needed between now and our next rollout, which would be White Flag of this year, is to make sure we get more service providers on there. What we found with 17 providers is not near enough. So our project manager has went through their existing resource guides and has put together a list of nonprofits and available resources to help get that onto that system. So it has not yet been rolled out to police officers. That is the goal, that is the goal for that to happen, but it is not yet populated enough for us to feel like it's going to get, you can certainly use it now, but there's a lot of opportunity for us to be able to get that to an effective ways of, way of resource, or resource connection.
You referring to the app?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's a website, yeah.
Okay. And then my last, my last question is, you said earlier, you now service eight counties. The city of Jeffersonville gives $75,000. What other does Charlestown or Clarksville or, you know, I'm a councilperson for the city of Jeffs, so, but when I saw your budget, it looked like you used the bulk of the city of Jeffs for your operation. So what other, does Clarksville, I know, I'm friends with one of their town councils, and I know that they gave money to Haven House, but she mentioned they gave to the coalition. So what other Sellersburg, Clarksville, anyone around besides the city of Jeffs?
City of New Albany does. So they have, they have not given at the level that New Albany has, at least consistently. So that is something that the last time we got allocation, there was $100,000 they were going to be allocating. 25 was going to go to the Haven House, 75 was going to go to the homeless coalition, and it worked out where it was 50 and 50. So that was where we're at with the city of New Albany. Now, in terms of re-engaging the town of Clarksville, that's certainly an opportunity and needed, as we've seen with what happened with America's Best. They certainly should be participating within this effort as well. But in terms of going to other communities, you know, not, not every community has the same financial resources, but there are ways to tap into communities to show that they have skin in the game, at least a proportionate amount. So for the more rural communities, the ways that the homeless coalition sees that they can be engaged, grant found, their local community foundations, you know, applying for maybe some of those smaller dollar grants, but that's certainly something as a, as we look to diversify the revenue and make sure that we are representing and really getting buy-in from all of the communities that would be taking place moving forward. Now, it's now eight counties as of January, so it's a relatively short period of time, and that is a requirement by becoming the regional chair, which we feel like the city of Jeffersonville is better served with our organization as the regional chair, given that we represent all of the service providers, and we have staff to support that.
You mentioned the need for the HMIS system, for the providers to have, use that to be a requirement. Is there a way that the city, by ordinance or by some sort of action, can help that happen for the service providers?
If you were to give any, for example, the new ordinance that you were just discussing, if you were to give any funds, you could require that that organization participate within that software, you would need to seek legal counsel to make sure that was within your purview. But that is some, one recommendation I would make, if you're going to be investing in an organization, make sure they participate. And, and more importantly, don't, they don't actively undermine the participation within the HMIS system.
And you said if they don't do that, they need to at least do the point in-
Point-in-time count. Yes. Yes.
Were you ever given a reason why they didn't participate? Is it cumbersome for them, or did they not have the software, money for the software?
The software is at no charge, so it is not that issue, is whether someone wants to institute that within their organization. So the homeless coalition does not receive federal funding. However, we do participate in the homeless management information system and our White Flag program, and that was started last year. Because we felt like if we're telling other people to participate in it, we need to. And not only that, we see individuals at White Flag, and that helps build up the documentation that the state needs to give our region more, more resources. We can't solve this issue with local resources alone. We really do need to access some state resources, and without us documenting the need, we can't.
Well, I think from your resignation here to, what, August 33rd?
Yes.
But it might be too much, too close of a timeframe that somebody within the homeless coalition reach out to the new, they haven't signed anything, but either reach out, Councilperson White can set it up, or something to talk with, whoever's going to be involved with the new Haven House. I know Pastor Jim Moon's heavily involved.
Yes, so there was-
So we can get, they know this, they know how to do it, and how important it is.
Absolutely. So our board chair in the audience, she's had discussions with Pastor Moon and is continuing that conversation, very early in conversation, so we don't, you know, we're trying to see what it's going to look like, but we know as a coalition, there are certain expectations or certain things that we know need to be met for that shelter to run effectively. So we want to help whoever's going to operate that shelter to do so.
Healy, I just wanted to publicly thank you for your work during your time with the homeless coalition. I think hearing, hearing the progress of what your organization is doing, it seems like you guys are firing on all cylinders and, and providing the cohesion amongst all of these different players that, that was so necessary when the coalition was set up. So I wanted to thank you and appreciate all that you've done and wish you well.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So the thing you said, I never thought you would be able to overcome when I sat on the board as far as participation, people giving their, their night up during snowstorms to go sit, you know, and help homeless. And then now, and I always, when I was on the board, it was always voice that, "I don't think you're going to get people there unless you pay them." Well, you seem to overcome that, and then you're now to the place where you can pay supervisor to be there, which was, so I didn't think you were going to be able to overcome, so good job.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate that. So-
What you just mentioned about your fortune, there have been a number of discussions between a lot of providers, not much you need to ask, I was talking about. I represent two of these, I'm writing, I'm serious, I'm, I'm, which is why I also can give additional information, but that's what I'm giving at, why there's going to be a more focus on what's taking place with all the projects.
And I will say, as Matt had referenced, my last day is August 31st, and the transition plan is for the board to identify an interim, so that should happen by mid-September. You should have another person directing this organization so that there is no gap in leadership. And then they are, they will be doing a full-time search, looking for an executive director to bring on in January. So just wanted to make sure that you knew in terms of what the organization's commitment and capacity would be moving forward. Staff will remain in place as well, and things will keep going.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Next up, item number 14, Ms. Metcalf, an ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department.
Number 42. This is for professional services for the River Stage, requested from the Parks Department.
Do you know what that is?
Do not.
Just professional services? Motion to approve 2019 OR 42 on the person's second.
Second.
It's a transfer, correct?
Yes.
We have motion seconds to pass 2019 OR 42. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, six, five, a saying aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Next up, Ms. Metcalf, an ordinance to do for additional appropriation, public hearing.
Not, not a public hearing yet, just-
Oh, September 3rd is going to be the public hearing. That's right.
So the first one is for the capital lease payment for the police department for their radio leases. The second one for vehicles is an insurance reimbursement. The third one is for property and casualty in the council's budget. I believe that Ms. Conlon discussed that earlier, or not earlier, but in an email. And then the last one is professional services, which is a theme reimbursement check that we got from the Parks Department, just re-appropriating that revenue.
The question on the lease on the very top one, capital leases, that was not in the budget?
It was not included in the budget for this year.
Didn't, okay.
That's for radios, right?
Yes.
Isn't that a multi-year lease that we approved?
Yes.
Is it two years ago?
Yes.
So is this the third and final?
I think that the final one is next year. I'm not sure.
Is it in the budget for next year?
I believe so.
If it's not, you better put it in there.
Just an oversight?
I believe so.
An extensive oversight. Forty-two.
Forty-three.
Is the motion to approve 19 OR 43 in the first and second?
Second.
Yeah, motion second to pass 2019 OR 43 on the first and second reading. Any other discussions? Seeing none, all is in favor, six, five, a saying aye?
Aye.
As opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
In fact, I hear it's two opposed. Mr. Wilder, attorney comments?
As I've always said, when the lawyer doesn't have anything to talk about, it's a good day.
All right. Any department heads? I don't see any department heads. No department heads. Any public comment? Anybody sign up that sheet? Mr. Wilder, anybody sign up?
Nobody. I was going to call Jed.
You can throw a vote if you want. Mr. White, council comments? Yours. Ms. Maples? Ms. Gil?
Yes, we need to set a, it is now August, so we need to set up a noise ordinance violation committee meeting. So I think Larry needs to shoot off some dates, maybe of his availability, if he could do that to all the members. I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Ms. Trockens?
Two quick things. The band, remember, we funded, helped fund a kind of theme song for Jeffersonville. It's part of their yearly revamp, celebrating a important anniversary for the city of Jefferson, Jeffersonville High School. That is going to be unleashed on the public on September the 9th at 11 o'clock, and it is in conjunction with some other, and I'm not totally familiar with it, some other, I think it's the dedication of the arch paddle wheel down by the Portage House. So not exactly-
That's exactly what it is.
Okay. And they will be performing that for the first time to the public. At that time, of course, everyone is invited to, to come. That'll be good.
What time?
11 o'clock on September the 9th, and it's supposed to be in front of, well, where the Portage House restaurant is.
The, the band is going to be down low in the fishing awards. Yeah, the war. Yeah. Yeah, but the, the actual presentation ceremony will be up top, but the band will be down below. So, oh, part, let me add, add to that if I can. Part of it is that they're going to actually do like formations and march around, so there's a visual aspect to it.
And then the same thing, and we talked a lot about it tonight, but I just wanted to say to Nathan, whether it was going to pass or fail, I was going to commend you for trying to get out in front of this. And it sounds like other things that maybe can't be shared with the public are in motion. And I mean, I will have no problem if one of those things arises to make a simple, we can change what, we can always change what we have done. And that's why my vote was for it, was, I'm not privy to all the things that everybody's sitting here, it seems to maybe be privy to. But it's definitely, I mean, something needs to be done, and we need to be a, you know, something needs to be a catalyst to do that. So that was my no vote, and I wanted to say, you know, thanks for, it may not even be here next year, but thanks for at least being the catalyst of, of something moving. And I'm anxious to hear what this, now that we have pieces seeming to come together, I'm very interested to know what all that ends up looking, and be glad to help with any of it. And that's it.
Ms. Trowen?
Does that going to be a, does it remember hashtags?
Did you mention the ribbon cutting, or the, not the ribbon cutting, the groundbreaking tomorrow?
Oh, no, I did not, but-
But you should, Ms. Trowen. Yes.
Tomorrow is a monumentous day in the city of Jeffersonville, in District Four, Scotty Maple's district. We're going to have a groundbreaking ceremony for a drive-through fast-food restaurant, Chick-fil-A. It's going to open its first Jeffersonville location.
The band will be there.
The band will be there. The band will be there. So at 9:00 AM, about 9:15, if you're interested, please come out to District Four, right there in front of Kroger. That's all.
That's it. Ms. Ellis?
I'm tired of chicken. But no, I don't have any.
Mr. Sanderson?
I would just ask our attorney, Mr. Wilder, if he could start working on a ordinance that establishes the homelessness, homeless needs and services non-reverting fund. For our, have something for our next meeting.
You want to have an outline of restrictions? You want to have it spending a part?
I can shoot you, I can shoot you something, but I-
So let me ask you this, when they take a picket bus and you, more expanded, and then see if you can, kind of get through there, see some of the messaging about some of that, if it's happening there.
And I could, I'll probably include Heather on that, if, if there, you need something that's not in there, so you, okay, I'll do that.
Could we, could we include the caveat that if, like, that Ms. Single recommended, maybe that if we're going to give money to an organization that uses that state system for accountability?
Yes, except what I thought I heard her say is they have to participate. I didn't hear that she said they have to, they have to like log into the system, but like the point, if they say, "Yes, I will help with the point in time" or whatever,